Check one, two. Check one, two.
Yeah, I work for a big corporation. And there we all each had our little group and a budget and all these little sub budgets that but I didn't have to account for it. I just my responsibilities on meeting my obligations.
Good evening and welcome to the six P M. City Council meeting of June third, twenty twenty five. Please note, all council members are present. With that, I am going to turn the time over to Vice Chair Hyer to say the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, if you would please stand, if you're able, and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could take a please, take a moment of silence with me. That would be great. Thank you. Are there any acknowledgements? Acknowledgements? That was kind of a shiver in between the acknowledgements. Comments later, maybe?
Well, I just wanted to acknowledge that it is twenty twenty five Utah Pride. This month is Pride Month. But also that the state is having the celebration. And it's this weekend, the seventh to eighth, and there's a parade on Sunday, and I'll be participating in that. And obviously, and the chair reminds me almost every year, I think, that we actually do a recognition of that in August, because that's when Ogden Pride happens here in our city. We don't want to conflict with the big celebration in Salt Lake. So I just wanted to acknowledge that that's happening this weekend, but also that I'm really honored to support that effort. I, you know, on one hand, I certainly want to appreciate people and make sure we're inclusive and welcoming to everyone. But on the other hand, and we also wish that maybe we didn't have to have the the month of pride and celebrate it. Because the reason that we do that is it's originally started as a protest and that people were standing up for their rights. And that we want to acknowledge that that's something that people still have to do. So I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Other acknowledgements? From the mayor.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to do an acknowledgement. We've got two important leaders in our chambers today. We have Fire Marshal Kevin Brown and Chief Mike Matthew. And who's not with us, but also is deserving of recognition is Deputy Chief Shelby Willis. I want to congratulate Shelby Willis for being selected to be the Fire Chief at Farmington City. It's a loss for Ogden City, but it's it's a win for Farmington, but it's also indicative of the kind of leadership that we develop in this city and in that department. And I'm also sad to to say, but also want to make sure I congratulate Kevin Brown for being promoted outside of our department, unfortunately. But Kevin will be the Deputy Chief of the Teton County Fire Department. So a big congratulations to Deputy Chief Shelby Willis and also Fire Marshal Kevin Brown. And a big tip of the hat and a sincere appreciation and thanks to Chief Chief Matthew for developing the kind of department that develops leaders. The kind of leaders that other departments turn to when they need when they need leaders. So. Two big losses for Ogden, two big wins for the world.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, those two acknowledgements are unacceptable, and we'll move right along. With that, we have a request to be on the agenda with the Ogden City Youth Council, Brandon Garside.
You have to bear with me as I am kind of multitasking here, but thank you, Chair, for the time. As you said, for those who don't know, my name is Brandon Garside. I am the Communications Director for the Ogden City Council, and part of my responsibilities is part of my responsibilities is to run the Ogden City Youth Council. And so the report that we're doing today will be. There we go.
I thought you were taking shots at the youth council with some of the pictures they posted of you, so.
Yeah, yeah, right? So we're going to go over what we've done over the last year, the purpose of the youth council. And we have some members of the youth council here to to share their experiences as well. I think part of the experience of being on the youth council is being able to address their council members directly. So tonight's a part of that. Just a quick summary of the youth council, first of all. We've approached this with a three-tier purpose for the council and for the youth council, and that is to educate the youth about local government, what it is, how it works, different employment opportunities within local government, and demonstrating just getting them more familiar with with local government so that bridge is gapped early early on in their lives. We also seek to develop leadership skills, and this includes delegation of of responsibilities and projects and things like that. And that they can put on their resumes as they apply for for colleges and get a better idea of what they want to do and who they want to be. And then, as well as serve the community. And we will show how we've done that this past year. This year, this last year, the schools represented on the council were Ben Lomond High, Ogden High, New Ames, and Bonneville High. And I know what you're thinking, Bonneville High is in Washington Terrace. You are correct. However, there was a student who lives within Ogden but attends Bonneville High School. So with that, we'll first go over the the different tours that we took over the course of the school year. And for that, I'm going to invite members of the youth council to come up and and speak to you. I'll have them introduce themselves and kind of give you more of a breakdown. So with that, Grace, turn the time over to you.
Okay, my name's Grace. I've been with the youth council for just through this year. And I'm going to talk a little bit about our tours that we did. So our first tour was of the Weber County Elections Office, which was great because we got to see them like in work, doing the polls right during election time. So it was super cool to see that. Our next one was the Vertre simulator, where we got to see how the police trained. And we even got to do a little bit of the simulator ourselves. The next one was the Marshall White Center Construction Site, which is where we got to do a tour of the Marshall White Center before it was complete. And we got to see how it would benefit our community. The next one is the Public Safety Building, where we got to see how the the inner workings of the police and fire systems. And that was also really cool because it was super unique to see how they worked and how they like. One of the things we got to see was the crime investigation, and that was like interesting because we saw how they were able to go to a scene and identify things and how all the inner workings worked. And our next treatment or our next tour is the Water Treatment Center, which is going to be on Monday. And so really excited to see what that's going to entail.
Before you go, what what high school do you come from?
Oh, I go to New Ames High School.
New Ames, okay. Thanks, Grace.
So I'll invite Adeline to come up for the next section. We invited some. I'll let you speak. It's your section. Sorry.
My name is Adeline. I've been. This is my first year on the youth council. We had several presentations, and one of them was how Ogden City works, and it was really cool to like see how the government is set up in Ogden City. And like it was really detailed and helped me like realize things that I hadn't really ever like really thought about before. So that was really cool. And then there were also two other ones, recorders and working with the state legislature. And yeah, so they were really cool and helpful.
What high school?
I homeschooled.
Oh, homeschool, homeschool high school?
Yeah.
Okay, so next I'm going to talk about our experience at Local Officials Day. So we started out eating breakfast at the Capitol, and we did a little scavenger hunt to go see different rooms in the Capitol as well as how it worked on the inside. And then we went down to the Salt Palace Convention Center, and we got to participate in a mock debate with a bunch of other youth councils from other schools. And then after that, we were in some breakout rooms where we got to see things like how legislature legislature worked, as well as different internships. And then after that, we went to like a lunch where we got to talk to Lieutenant Governor Deidre Henderson, which was really cool. We got to ask her questions and learn more about what she does as well.
Hey, I'm Titus. I go to New Ames, and I'm on service. So we did the Community Thanksgiving Dinner with the Larnier House. We had families fill out cards talking about what they were grateful for. And the families were able to take advantage of the food that we provided. And we also had the Community Christmas Dinner. So we manned a booth where we handed out gifts to children. The kids were actually surprisingly picky about what they wanted. That was really great, and I felt like a lot of people were benefited from that. And then we had our big service project that kind of the whole year I felt was leading up to. And we did that through the Larnier Larnier House also. So we put together hygiene kits consisting of basic things you need. And that was really fun. It actually went pretty fast. We put together a total of a hundred and handed those out to the Larnier House so that they could give this to people who are in need. Yeah.
And some other activities, we had a social event towards the beginning of the year where we just played some games and just kind of loosened up a little bit so that the camaraderie would 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 be better with this group. And of course, you've seen them at the parades. They decorated your golf carts for the for the holiday parade and then obviously decorated the the trailer for both parades as well, including, you know, the the flag there on display, which the youth council helped helped to narrow down and select for your final consideration. And we are currently accepting applications for the upcoming year. We are. We have already had fourteen applications for next year and are still waiting or are still accepting more at the moment. So for those listening at home or on Zoom, if you have a child that or a relative you feel that would benefit from this program, you can go ahead and scan the Q R code on your screen now, and that will take you to the youth council homepage where there's the application as well as more information. You can also reach out to me directly. My email is Brandon Garside at OgdenCity.gov, spelled just the way it sounds. You can also call me at eight zero one six two nine eight one zero three. Is that right? Yeah, okay. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and and make the youth council available for answering any further questions that you may have as well.
Any questions?
I think it'd be really nice if you could kind of give us the breakdown of how many people attended from each high school and.
So it was, as as we know, we went over this last time. It was very much lopsided in terms of particularly with the with the public schools. Ogden High, we had a ton. And we only had one from Ben Lomond, but I'm happy to report that we've doubled that. So we, I mean, when we had Ben Lomond's student government here, and I had the opportunity to talk to them about the youth council. And we went to Ben Lomond as well and spoke to one of their classes about the youth council. Steve was kind enough to join me on on that trip. And despite that, we still only have two applications applicants for for next year. But again, we're still open. And, you know, with it being summer, it's going to be a little harder to to get inside the doors there, obviously. But once the school year picks up again, we will try to get back into Ben Lomond.
You seem to be very successful with New Ames. Is that just is it self-propagate? Is that what happens with New Ames?
I I don't know. I mean, I could let them kind of speak to that as as to the reasoning behind that. But but yeah, but no, I mean, this past year, we actually didn't have as many kids from New Ames as we did Ogden High. So there's actually, and I and I think that's the case with the the applicant pool for this upcoming year as well. But yeah, New Ames has been pretty consistent. But yeah, I mean, we reach out to the administration for every school and and yeah, we've had better success in that approach with schools like New Ames. But with Ogden High, as soon as we went there, we we had a bunch of applications. And we thought that would happen at Ben Lomond, but it didn't. So maybe we just visited the wrong class or it was the wrong time of year, you know, a lot of things to consider when, you know, when we're trying to evaluate how we do here.
Well, kudos to you for the good work you do. I have a couple of granddaughters that were involved in a couple of years ago. It really enhanced their understanding of everything. They still talk very highly about it. And Councilmember Richie and I will go to work on the Ben Lomond thing.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ben, I just have a quick follow-up question. It's high school students from students in Ogden City.
Sure.
How many applicants or how many participants do you take?
This this has kind of been a point of conversation. So we that we don't have a limit of of those that we will take. We hope that eventually we do have to turn people away.
Right.
But right now, we if you apply, you're in is is kind of how it's gone. This past year, so leading up to last year, we had seventeen applicants, but even attendance was was average about seven and a half per event.
Students get so busy, yeah.
Yeah. And and we understand that, and we may need to to reevaluate some of the the rules. They're not called the rules and norms, but just because I can't think of the word now, that's what I'm going to call them as as we go into the next year because of that, because we also don't want to boot people off of the council. I mean, obviously, leadership positions are are different, but but yeah, to answer your question, we do not have a limit, but we would like to have one.
Okay.
So I might have missed it. Did you say, is it high school age? Is that tenth grade or ninth grade?
It is ninth through twelve grade.
Okay. And we're taking applications for next year?
Correct.
Perfect.
Any other comments, Mayor?
I just wanted to add to the conversation around the Ben Lomond engagement. So as you know, we've been increasing our community engagement on the north end of town, and we've had a ton of really good engagement with Ben Lomond High School. I can, I personally commit. I've already sent to some contacts the link. And I'll call. I will personally call parents if I need to. But I know a ton of kids in both the S B O and in the Urban Student Alliance now. And I think there'll be a lot of kids that are excited for the opportunity. It might take some, you know, deliberate engagement, but that's what we're doing now. But I commit to help Ken and Rich on the Ben Lomond side. I think there's really, really amazing kids that would love this opportunity.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it.
And I've been loving those podcasts. Maybe the youth council get involved in that, too.
Yeah, no, that'd be cool. Yeah. Good. Those have been good projects, huh?
Yeah.
Well, kudos to you and kudos to you guys for showing up and doing all that work and service work and all the other things that you did. So thank you. Hope it was worth it.
Thank you.
What's that?
You want to do a photo?
That's a great idea. Point five. I gotta stay up on it, man. Yeah, point five.
If anybody could do it, they could. All of that, we're gonna try it.
For the kids. Just do it for the kids.
Yeah, smoke, because that one's got his arm in it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at our future council members right there.
There they are.
All right. Well, next on our agenda is the approval of minutes. The work session and regular meeting of April fifteenth, twenty twenty five. Councilmember Richie.
Yes, Chair, I've reviewed those minutes and found them to be accurate, and I would make the motion that we approve those minutes.
Second.
We have a a motion by Councilmember Richie. I'll give the second to Councilmember Myers. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Next on our agenda is our four consent items. We have the proposed executive municipal officer compensation, setting the public hearing for June seventeenth. We have the proposed enterprise fund transfer, setting the public hearing for June seventeenth, twenty twenty five. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty six, twenty thirty capital improvement plan, setting the public hearing for June seventeenth, and the proposed salary schedule, setting the public hearing for June seventeenth as well.
Chair, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items by setting the public hearing for June seventeenth for all four items.
Second.
We have accounts. We've got a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Chaberka to set the public hearings for June seventeenth on those four items. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Next on our agenda is a public hearing, and it is for the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six tentative budget. Glenn Simms, how are you?
Doing very well. Thank you. So thank you for allowing me a few minutes. This is largely the same presentation that you all heard a couple of weeks ago, so I apologize for the redundancy. But for folks who haven't heard it, hopefully this will be helpful. So to just go over what I will be going over, this will be a fairly quick presentation, but we'll touch on some of the budget resources we have, the review schedule, just a high-level budget overview, some personnel changes, quickly touch on the capital improvement projects and explain what the actions are tonight on the agenda. So as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, there are a number of great budget resources for folks who want to really dive in and really get to know what is being proposed with the budget, what some of the numbers are, what some of the changes are. So these resources are available. Starts with the Proposed Budget Book, the Mayor's Presentation from May sixth, the line item budgets, agenda and packet materials, department-specific information, staff presentations, both in council meetings and in work sessions. And then, of course, the audio and video recordings of both the work sessions and the council meetings. So these are the websites that that information can be found. I went into a little bit more detail a couple of weeks ago about where specifically on the websites these different elements are. These are the pages. So the city's main budget page, the agendas and minutes page for the council, and then the council's budget page. So we've got a main city budget page, and we also have a council budget page where we compile some additional information. The one thing I didn't mention a couple of weeks ago was the online budget book. This is a little bit different than what we've done in the past, so this is a little bit easier to navigate. You can go through the different sections, highlight different sections, save different sections without having to go through eight hundred-page PDF that is a little bit more difficult to go through sometimes. So that is available on the main city budget page. As I mentioned, the line item budgets, these are a great resource for people who really want to track all the expenses and understand all the different funds and and the changes over over the last couple of years. And I'll plug these again because these are fantastic resources. Look for these significant changes documents. These are on the website. They're in our packet material. These really give a great explanation as to what has changed in each of the funds for this year's budget. So they give a great, great explanation of of the changes and what's happening. So as far as the review, you've had a number of work sessions already. And so for folks who want to dive into a specific department or a specific issue, you can look at the schedule and find out when those those department directors presented their budgets and when those discussions took place. So we started on May thirteenth, continued on May twentieth, and then again on the twenty seventh. And of course, last week, we also had our budget open house. And so people were able to come and talk to you all and and administrative staff about budget topics. We had another work session today, and we'll have another couple of work sessions over the next couple of weeks. These ones in June are more for general discussion. For example, today, we talked more about the Schedule A one changes and other things that you might want to see with the final budget. As far as formal action goes, the council set the public hearing on the tentative budget for tonight. That happened on May twentieth. So tonight, you will hold the public hearing and then consider adopting the tentative budget with any schedule. and then consider adopting the tentative budget with any Schedule A changes. We don't have any Schedule A changes this year. So it would just be what the mayor presented to you. So the tentative budget will be the mayor's proposed budget to you. And then further changes will happen with the Schedule A1, which is the final budget. So you set the public hearing already on the capital improvement plan, the enterprise fund transfers, the executive municipal officers' compensation, and the salary schedules. So those all will take place on the 17th. And then the final budget is with this action. If you adopt the tentative budget and set the public hearing, that will set the public hearing for the final budget. And of course, as I mentioned, on the 17th, there are a couple of public hearings where there's no action. So those first two, the enterprise fund transfers and the executive municipal officers' compensation, state code requires that you hold a public hearing, but there's no specific action on those two items. So the changes and proposals that are included in those two items get approved with the final budget. But then you would hold a public hearing and consider adopting the capital improvement plan, the salary schedules, which sets the pay range for all the employees, the final budget with the Schedule A1 changes. And then that's where you would set the certified tax rate as well. So I mentioned, this is a very high-level overview. So this is just a really high-level overview of the different funds and what's proposed with the budget. Again, if people want to get more involved and really dive deeper into those numbers, all those resources are available for people. As far as the significant policies, we've talked about this a little bit so far. We are expected to adopt the county-provided certified tax rate. So we aren't proposing any changes to the certified tax rate. We don't have that number yet. We expect to have that number early next week. So when we get that, we can get a little bit more information and analysis on what that means, how that impacts properties, and how much that changes from last year. Something that was important to the council was to take unused wage and benefit funds and carry that forward. And that has happened with this budget. So there is proposed to be $2 million of that unused wage and benefit funding that is proposed to pay for the compensation and wage and benefits for the upcoming fiscal year. And as far as the financial principles and the budget goals and guidelines, there aren't any significant changes proposed with those. Just a quick overview of what is proposed for personnel. In the proposed budget, there are three eliminated positions, four added positions for a net total of 700. I told you the wrong number a couple of weeks ago. I told you 698. I had forgotten that we added a couple mid-year. So if this budget is approved, we would have an even number of 700 full-time employees authorized. So it also includes 12 reclassifications, eight title changes, two transfers between departments. And as far as compensation goes, there is a proposed 2.97% cost of living increase for all employees. This is significant because it changes the range for people. So if somebody's topped out in their range, this would actually move their range up. 1.5% merit increase. There is some discussion about increasing that to 2%. We had those discussions today in the work session. So we will get some final numbers on that with the Schedule A1. And then a 4% step increase for sworn fire and police employees per their pay scales. So as far as capital improvement projects, again, there's a lot more information as far as those go with some of the other information that's available. But as far as funding proposed for FY '26, there's just over $29.7 million coming from a number of different funds. So today, what is on your agenda for consideration is adopting the final, or I'm sorry, the tentative budget for FY '26. And again, no changes with Schedule A. And setting the public hearing on the final budget for the 17th, which would include the staffing documents that authorizes those 700 employees, the Schedule A1 changes, and that changes the tentative budget. So if anybody's keeping track of those changes, tentative budget gets adopted, the A1 changes the tentative for the final. And then, as I mentioned, the certified tax rate. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? Oh, that was fast. All right.
Thank you.
Don't go far. This is a public hearing. So if there is anyone that would like to talk about the proposed tentative budget, come on up and...
Well, I have a lot to talk about, but the one that's in my mind right now is about the pay. Oh, Laura Lewis, is the pay increases. Because I was looking at that, and it looks like as you stack them up, not from that page, but from the one you published earlier a couple of weeks ago, it looks like there's a potential for an 8% overall raise for employees. Is that correct?
Is that the only question you have? You said you had a minute.
Oh, no, I'm waiting for an answer. I can't do that, can I? Yeah, for now, that'll work.
Okay.
Oh, one more. And the merit raise, is there goals tied to that? Or is that just by being here, they're going to get a 4% raise or whatever?
I'm Joseph Baumman. I'm a longtime resident of Ogden, Utah, and proud member to be here. And thank you for allowing me to speak. Last month, I was cut off. I wasn't able to bring up a different deals. And I was going to thank whoever did the agenda. They had the public comment at the end. So I'm going to jump around so I don't get eliminated from other speaking. So I can't come back up again. So what I wanted to cover, the enterprise fund. I was here last year and talked about some of the past history, about the water line and why it wasn't done. And I think we're paying almost double now what it would have cost if we'd have done it 20 years ago. And I specifically asked the mayor about the enterprise fund and the amount of money that's generated, that's being transferred. It's like 3.9 million, roughly $4 million that's coming out of the Water District that goes into the general fund, into the enterprise fund. And what my question was back then, last year, was that if we could utilize a lot of that revenue, not put it in the general fund, but put it towards the replacement on the bond and retire that, put it on the principal so it can retire that bond earlier and save the taxpayers a lot of money towards the end of the replacement. And I don't know if anything's been done and checked into it or not, but I was told at that meeting that that would be investigated to see the possibility. And then on the budget, on page 10... Let's see, no, I take it back. On page two, I'm sorry. On the travel from 2025 to 2026, there's a jump of $80,000. So I'm curious if we're traveling to go do what for that amount of money? That's a lot of money, $80,000. But if we're entertaining for the Olympics, because I know we're going to have the eye sheet and that type of stuff here, and that's a big generation in 2034. Then on page 102, for the Marshall White Center, there's $237,825 that jumps in the year 2026. And it's allocated for, I can't read my reading. It's in Swahili, it looks like. But it's a line item for, let's see, what is it? Professionalism and tech. So I wonder why that big jump. Is Marshall White getting new IT-type stuff? So that's a question, because that's a huge amount of money to spend for, to have that as a line item in your budget. Am I done?
You are.
Oh, no. I still have a few other. The haircut allocation on page 242 for the Marshall White, that's a big question mark, $459,000. I get my haircut once every couple of months.
And it looks good for $249,000. All right, are there any other questions? I don't, I don't see anyone else in the chambers coming up. How about online? All right, let's...
Chair, not seeing any hands or movement, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing on this.
One second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Ritchie, second by Councilmember Graff to close the public hearing. This is a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that, let's try to get some of these questions answered. I think I'm going to try my best to, so question about pay increases. There are, there are two different pay increases out there. I'm not sure I'm going to say this right. We've got one at a proposed 1.5% merit. And then the other is for sworn employees. So public safety and fire at 4% merit. And then everyone is going to get a 2.97% cost of living raise. So non-public safety will get a 1 and, or it's proposed right now as a 1.5% plus a 2.97% on top of that. And then for public safety, it'll be a 4% and a 2.9%, 7%. So I'm hoping that, did that answer your question? So I don't know where the 8% came in.
I can, I can add to that. So the, there's a 2.97 for, to adjust for inflation, and 1.5 is specifically to the performance. Oh, I'm sorry. The 1.5% is specifically to the pay for performance. And the question about, are they going to get paid just because of their hair? Or is it going to be truly tied to performance? And the development of all the KPIs is happening every day right now. So we're leading up to, every department's leaning in and providing all the data. And we're doing a bunch of data analyses. And we're going to be providing the KPIs for the performance component, key performance indicators for the pay for performance. So we want to make sure it's not a rubber stamp, that it's not an automatic. And I just wanted to assure you that that work is happening every day.
I think that answered your question. Okay. And then, I didn't really, I, so the enterprise fund, we are just working on that. You probably will get a notice that we're going to be transferring money again from the enterprise fund for the water sewer and, water sewer and refuse. Yeah. And storm sewer, thank you. And so that will be transferred out of the enterprise fund soon for this year. As far as the individual budget items that you were talking about, I'm sure that the Marshall White Center budget probably doesn't look like last year's budget because Marshall White Center wasn't even open last year. So we've probably budgeted correctly now for this year's going-forward budget as far as now that it's open. So I'm not sure we, why there are certain things in different buckets. But I don't know that it seems out of alignment on that. And then maybe Glenn, is there something about the haircut piece that I missed?
I actually have to defer to finance staff. As much as we try to memorize those line items, they have them memorized. So maybe I could lean on them to talk about that.
We'll bring, maybe, I think Justin's pulling it up.
If I can get a volunteer from the back row that can talk about that, that might be a little bit better than me.
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Shorlson.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chair and Chair. On, I must have missed the full question as far as the, what specific line it is. But you're correct, as far as Marshall White goes, when you look in the line item, there's a lot of increases. And that's all based on working with our, with VCBO, the contractor that's helped with the planning and design, and what projections we would need for a budget there as we opened the center. And so, yeah, where we didn't have a center before this year, there would have been hardly any budget. And so now we've increased that. So there's large increases there. But as far as the haircut, the only that I can think of is, in the line item, would be in the budget for the two tax increment areas and the RDA for Lincoln and Fairmount. Those were tack, or those were haircut districts where their increment all went to the CBD mall district to help repay debt. And those two areas expired. And so the budgets to transfer those funds between those two RDA areas have been removed in the budget next year. So that's a large decrease. I don't know if that's what the question was. Be happy to visit additionally after, to try and...
Yeah, maybe if you could do that. It sounds like there might be some more specific questions that Mr. Baumman has.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, if you can, okay, that's great. Yeah. Good, okay.
Ready for a motion?
I am.
Chair, I would make a motion then that we adopt proposed ordinance 2025-14.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hare, second by Councilmember Graff to adopt proposed fiscal year 2025-26 tentative budget. We are, no, we are setting the public hearing for the budget on the 17th. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Yes.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hare?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye, that passes. All right. Next on our agenda is reports from administration on the proposed hazard environmental conditions amendment.
Chair, while he's coming up, could I take just a second? I want to thank the administration. This year, we've done a lot of work together prior to this point. People have kind of once, have asked, how come you guys aren't fighting, you know, like you should? Why aren't you fighting? And we still fight. We just fight earlier and, and come up with some, with compromises and get to a point where we can all get on the same page. And I really appreciate the, I thank the administration for those opportunities. They bring things to us much earlier. And that's why we tend to have more consensus at the end. So just, just point that out.
All right.
Chair, counsel, thanks for having me. Fire Marshal Kevin Brown. And just for the record, I haven't fought with anyone on council for days. So that's not, not everybody, just you guys fight, right? I'm here tonight to talk about fire restriction ordinance. That we're trying to clean up the ordinance a little bit. The way it's worded now is restrictions are pretty much on or off. If we're in a fire restriction stage, you can have no open flame in certain areas of the city wherever the restriction is located. So it doesn't allow for summertime barbecues or any type of fire pit or that type of thing. So this, this ordinance, it would, it would clean that up and it would, it would give stages to the ordinance color code. So easier for the public to understand, but also allow people to enjoy summer activities, you know, a fire pit or a chimney or barbecue-type situation. And in certain situations, it may allow fireworks, ground fireworks or sparklers, but not aerial fireworks. And as we move through the dryness and the, later in the summer and the restrictions increase, I mean, we can start to incrementally take those things back to keep the community safe. So I'd like you to consider that ordinance change. If you have any questions, I'm happy to hear them.
Yeah, there were a few questions that, through our work session when we talked about this. I don't know if you have further questions or the same questions.
Well, I think it might be, I mean, it might be helpful if you used, kind of explained what that is. So you've got, you got green, which is what we're in all the time, unless we're in something restrictive.
Right.
Then you're going to go to yellow, I believe it is.
Yellow would be the next stage.
And that will be, what will be allowed during yellow?
So under yellow, aerial fireworks will be prohibited. And any ignition source in an area that's not landscaped, constantly attended, or equipped with a means of extinguishment. And then what's allowed is small open flame fire pits 25 feet from structures, gas pellet, solid fuel, charcoal-burning outdoor appliances, and ground-level fireworks and sparklers. And so what that means is if you're in your backyard, it's mowed, it's landscaped, there's an adult present, you have a hose or a bucket of sand, then those things are allowed. What we don't want to happen, even under a yellow level restriction, which is a low-level restriction, are aerial fireworks or people doing it on a wooded lot with tall, dry grass.
And then you go to orange.
Orange is the next level. There'd be no fireworks, ground or aerial.
Still get the fire pit?
Open flame, wood-burning fire pits would be restricted at the orange level.
Okay.
You can still use a type of appliance where you'd have a fire pit where you can shut the gas off. You know, it's a little bit safer than, it's much easier and faster to put out a gas-fired appliance than something that's burning wood. And then to move on, red would be a severe level condition where there'd be no sources of ignition allowed in the, in the restricted area. And I might see that under a severe drought index or red, red flag warning days, that type of thing.
How do people know what level it's going to be that day?
So we'll, we're trying not to do it on a day-to- So, we'll, we're trying not to do it on a day-to-day basis. Generally, when a restriction goes in place, that restriction doesn't change until the, the end of the fire season. So, as we progress and the fuels get drier, it gets hotter, we typically stay in the restriction we place it in. But we would have that information out on social media, news, the, the mailer would be in that, that type of format. So, anyway, we can get the word out, so.
This is better than on and off, so.
Better than on and off, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Kevin, is there ever a circumstance where we're in a red zone and the entire city is restricted?
That's very rare. We have done citywide restrictions one time in my history at the fire department. The chief may know of another time, but that was when the governor had declared a state of emergency due to level of drought. And he had said, no one should water their yards. And so, we considered the entire city to be at risk of fire because the yards were dry and ready for an ignition source to, to burn. And that's the only time in, in my memory that we've done a citywide red level restriction.
Okay. The, I'm going to, I let you all know that I, I attended a webinar last Wednesday put on by the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and they covered House Bill 48. And we talked a little bit about that when you were with us last. House Bill 48 is going to assess attacks on homes that fall into an area that are considered to be in this wildland urban interface and endanger a fire. A homeowner can mitigate those charges by having, for example, the fire department come out and kind of do an assessment around fuels. House Bill 48 talks nothing about ignition sources. House Bill 48 doesn't, one of the things that just, again, I'm going to beat my drum, we, they don't talk about fireworks, for God's sakes. So, we're in a wildland urban interface, and we've got concerns about urban fires, but we aren't going to talk about ignition. I'm going to try to stay calm. In this conversation, 90% of wildfires are started by human, they're human-caused. And in the top five causes are fireworks. And yet, we're still going to do fireworks. So, what the suggestion was, was lobby your state lawmaker. Because if I understand correctly, we can't say no as a municipality to aerial fireworks in our community, is that correct?
That's correct.
Unless we're in a certain area and a certain level of drought. So, I'm just going to invite the administration to use our lobbying efforts and have conversations with our state lawmakers around, let us paint our own picture around our circumstances after watching Louisville, Colorado, and Hawaii, and California, and other communities burn, to run the risk of using fireworks that might ignite our mountainsides and leak into our urban area is frightening to me. There was a day when we didn't think it could happen, but it can. And we're in a prime location for something like that to happen. So, this, I know you can't do anything about it. You're going mountain biking and backcountry skiing in Idaho. Or was there a fireman's job up there? Anyway, Kevin, thank you for, for being here to confirm what I heard around this conversation of House Bill 48 and letting me share my position around this as it pertains to Ogden City. And anything we can do as a city, I think we should at the state level. So, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just add for clarification before this spreads like wildfire?
Yes, please.
The, the fees assessed by House Bill 48 are assessed by the state, and the areas are determined by the state as well. So, it's not anything that we directly have control over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Congratulations to your new appointment, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Real fast, did you say those would be posted on our website, the firefighter's web, the fireman's website?
The, the burn conditions, the restriction levels? Yeah, any social media the city has, we'll, we'll get it out on those channels.
Perfect, thank you.
So, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, I'll make a motion if you're ready.
Yep.
I would propose that we adopt ordinance 2025-18, amending section 11, 6-3.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hyer, second by Councilmember Blair, to adopt proposed hazardous environmental conditions amendment. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Chaburka?
Aye.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Myers?
Aye.
Councilmember Ritchie?
Aye.
Councilmember Blair?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hyer?
Aye.
Chair White? Aye, that passes.
May I make a comment, just wanted to make sure to support Councilmember Graff's points? Because I also, every time we have fireworks, just to bring up that we also usually have very bad air quality. And so, that concerns me. Also, I think downtown is in danger too, so.
Yeah.
It worries me as well.
Yeah. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity to direct, address the council regarding concerns or ideas on any topic. Please come up and state your name, and you'll have three minutes. You state your name again.
Elizabeth Baumann again, Ogden, Utah, proud member of the city. Thank you for having me again. I thought I was going to be eliminated that first round. But the, the question I had, to be more specific to the gentleman that came up to address the Marshall White Center was is that on page 242, the haircut allocation to the rec center, that is what I don't understand. I don't know why you'd name a line item haircut. If it's eliminating something, it should be put as a debit or delta or something. But haircut allocation makes no sense to me, especially for 459,000. So, that, I'd like to have that addressed. And then, the other item was the budget. I understand the Marshall White Center, it just came online, but for 2025, there should be some type of a budget, which there wasn't, for the allocation to have the Marshall White Center function from June until December. And then, in 20, in 2026, and it'd go into something different. But to have that as that line item on there, I didn't understand that either for that professional fees and IT, whatever that is at 237, but that's what I have. See, I need four minutes instead of three. Thank you for hearing me.
All right.
Laura Lewis, Ogden City resident, I'm going to talk about the golf course again. I guess Mayor, you're the one that will be making that decision. I think it's a very bad idea to even consider making Mount Ogden Golf Course a mixed-use facility. I spent some time up at the golf course this weekend talking to golfers. And I learned some things about golfers' liability. I always assumed if I hit somebody, the golf course was going to cover it, or the building, the residence across the way. That's not always true. The first line, there was a gentleman up there that explained all this to me, that it doesn't work for the city. It was just somebody I talked to. They will, if someone is hit or there's property damage, they go to the golfer first. And that's who they go to, then the golfer would sue the city. So, if you go ahead and do this, you are putting all those golfers at risk for lawsuits if they hit somebody. And, and I'm not an attorney. I went out online, and this seemed to be true. So, you have the resources to check that. Because everything on the internet, I believe it's true, but you may not. Then, another one, there was another gentleman that lives up there, and this had never crossed my mind. He's concerned about homeless people moving in there. He says, we already have people living up in the foothills. And he says, you open this up, they will be here, living in here. And I thought, God, you're right, that's pretty nice residence up in there. I might take that up. But anyway, that was a, I thought, a real valid concern. And then, if you do this, right now, we have 200, 2,300 signatures of people who want to walk through there. But most people consider this, like myself, trespassing. So, we don't go through there. But as soon as you open this up and make it public, the floodgates are going to open. Your traffic is going to, oh, increase exponentially probably up there because that's a pretty nice walk. And there's already limited parking up there between the park, the pickleball courts, and the golf course, that is packed. So, how would you accommodate all this additional traffic and parking requirements along with some sort of improved trail in there? Also, if you open it up, most trails in the foothills have no security. You can run, ride those trails anytime, day or night, you'll see the little headlights up there all the time, riding around. So, how are you going to secure the security of that at night? You can have some, I guess, when the golf, golf course is open, but, oh, I got to hurry, I have a whole lot more to say. Darn it, okay, next week.
Thanks, Laura. All right, let's go online to Heath Sato.
Hi, Heath Sato, Ogden resident. First off, even though my friend Laura and I have butted heads over discussing whether there's anything we might be able to do with the golf course, I, I appreciate her going out there, talking to people, and doing the work of that. It adds to our discussion, and I, and the only other thing I wanted to say tonight was I really appreciate Councilmember Graff bringing up about the fireworks and staying on top of that and trying to move the public a little bit towards being a little more sane about our fire situation. And that's all, thanks.
Thanks, Heath. Anyone else? All right, if we could just really quickly, I think, Joseph, I think the haircut allocation actually is what Justin was talking about, and it's, the rec center is actually the Solomon Center, which is in an RDA. And I'm assuming, am I, am I getting a nod back there? And so, it might be just because we're mixing rec center with the Marshall White Center. So, it probably would be good for you to just quickly talk to him after this, if you, if you don't mind, if, okay. But that's my guess. And when you said that, I'm like, oh, that makes a little bit more sense.
Chair, can I, I think there was also maybe a little bit of a misunderstanding about our budget year, which goes from July to June instead of calendar year. And so, that may be some of the confusion as well about, you know, how those funds are allocated. It's the, you know, we did a budget amendment this year because Marshall White Center came online during this fiscal year. And so, there were some adjustments. But then, what we're talking about for this budget is a full, full fiscal year. Yeah.
And then, thank you, Laura, for your comments, and Heath as well. So, comments from the mayor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to reinforce the, the haircut thing. I'll let you and Justin have that conversation. That's a, there's a good explanation about all of that. The, the technology IT piece could be related to the software we need to, to do entry and exit, the software needed to manage memberships, it could be the security cameras, et cetera, all that. Those guys answer that for you, for me as well, if that's all right. The, I wanted to say the, I wanted to also recognize the, the staff. I haven't been here since the opening, so my apologies for my recent absences, but thanks for your understanding. Just wanted to thank the staff that made that event happen and also made the Marshall White Center project happen. I cannot understate how much work went into that by a number of people. But our rec staff and our public services and engineering staff worked their guts out to make it as great as possible. And I just couldn't be more thankful for how much energy they put into it and their, their hearts and their souls. For the fireworks, good job staying disciplined, you did pretty good, considering how strongly you feel about, strongly you feel about it. As you know, I also live in the wildland urban interface, have for a long time. In my prior career, I actually was, I worked quite a bit with the state forester, as well as the state fire marshal, with Forester Fire and State Lands. I sat on a committee that helped develop some of the, some of the policies around some of the local cooperation that we have for mitigation, which I think could still go a lot further with the, for local cooperation and support. You'll always have my voice in support of local control and local decision-making, especially on an issue that is so specific to a local area. I think there's a, there are kind of repeating similar patterns along the wildland urban interface across the Wasatch Front, but not every city has the rivers that run through it and threaten the downtown. Not every city has the same vegetation conditions and uses around the wildland interface, et cetera, et cetera. I always have wanted and continue to want and will continue to advocate for what you said. And to add on to what Heath said, some, some additional sanity would be really nice. I almost cursed just now. So, it would be really great. I'm with you on that, Heath. For the golf course, for Laura, sorry you ran out of time, if you weren't so damn, if you weren't so funny, you know, you, maybe you'd have finished, but welcome, that is, I mean, you're bringing up all the points that I have to consider when I made the decision that I did. The, the risk to golfers is very real. Every time I go golfing, which isn't that often, as evidenced by the way I play, but it's also concerning that I'm not in full control of my ball. But I have to be mindful that if something does happen to somebody or something, that does come to me. And that does worry me, it should worry every golfer. And we owe it to them to make sure that they're not, that we're not putting other people at risk, including them financially and legally liable. So, that's all part of the calculus of the decisions that are being made. And in terms of the, the homeless concerns, they're, really what we have been having is, has looked a lot like wide-open, do whatever you want on the golf course. And that has been unacceptable, not just from a golf experience, not just from a risk experience, but from a public access and all manner of reasons, including that, I guess. But I just want to say that we are, we have been engaging with the group that was, was pushing back. They've been actually super constructive, really helpful. They presented an alternative to us that we've looked at, we've put in front of the, the Trails Network for, for feedback. We'll be probably refining that proposal still further. And we are going to be working on a really robust community engagement process. It's not something I'm going to get wrong twice. So, we're, if we take longer than people wish, it might be because we're making sure we don't, that we get it right. But I will say that as much as the public input has been, especially here and especially aimed at me, there has been an enormous amount of input in the other way as well. Our golf staff continued to field a lot of input, especially after that meeting, around what may or may not be proposed. And I think we're going to see a lot of mixed feedback. I don't know what that's going to look like. But I'm committed to listening, and I'm committed to make, making what I think is the best decision possible for Ogden. But any, any alternative would have to be, would have to seriously consider risk and seriously consider the fact that crossing the course is one thing, trespassing and going anywhere and everywhere is a whole nother thing for me. And, and the latter, the trespass, is absolutely unacceptable, in my view. And I think 99.9% of anybody and everybody I've talked to says that doesn't seem appropriate, right? So, I'm very mindful of that. There won't be any decisions being made, no, no further closures or openings or whatever until we've got a well-vetted and thorough community engagement process moving forward. We are repairing the fence along the park, the white fence. That has been in disrepair for quite some time and has long been asked for by a number of people. And I'm happy to say that we're going to move forward with that. There was a, there's a contractor working on that project specifically. And part of what they were asked to do, and we barely got ahead of, was to set posts and put a gate where we put the closures. That was kind of pre-planned. And we got ahead of that and didn't hang the gates, but the posts had been set. So, I just wanted to say that the post got set, sorry about that, but we were able to stop a gate from being put up until we make further decisions and get more public input on the existing closure areas. But it should be celebrated that that fence along the park, that delineates between the park and the golf course is being replaced. But it should be celebrated that that fence along the park that delineates between the park and the golf course is being replaced. That is long overdue. So we'll continue to do that, but that doesn't signal any changes to anything that's currently contemplated right now. I think I will reinforce the, the thank you and the indebtedness that we have to Kevin Brown and to Shelby Willis. It's hard to listen to Kevin. I don't know. For me, it was hard to listen to Kevin tonight because of how amazing you've been. It's such a poignant reminder of the loss. We're messy, man.
Has he really given his notice? I mean, is there anything? Comments from council members? If you don't mind, I, I have a couple of quick comments. So I don't, I don't get to wear my jacket very often, but I try to wear this jacket and the start of Pride Month. So thank you, Councilmember Chaburka, for starting this. And every year I talk, I try to come up with something and talk a little bit about why, why pride matters and why pride matters in Ogden. And I've just recently had somebody ask me, do we really need to, like, a whole month for pride? Or I, you know, why is it always being pushed on us? And I, I started to think about it a little bit, about trying to give you a little bit more of an analogy of why, why it's important and why it's important to talk about it. And so I'm, I'm going to give you a little bit of perspective on my end. Many of you went to Ben Lohman High School and Ogden High and, or even Weber State. And we know what that does and what that, that stands for us to, to be close to our school and be very prideful of our school and our team. And, and our neighbors sometimes gather around and they're just super prideful of what, what our schools are doing. And that kind of community pride is what creates that sense of belonging. And so I know, I know, you know, some of you go all in. You know, we've got checkered ties for the Scots. And I know we have some orange tiger sweatshirts that get worn. And we have, a lot of us that wear purple for the Wildcats. And we even have the city help paint during homecoming weekend for the Weber State homecoming. So we're really prideful of our, of what is, what we, what we believe in our school and what that school brings to us. And it's that sense of belonging. And I, I wanted to convey that Pride Month is a very similar sense of, of belonging. And I know it's sometimes hard because you think that maybe we're asking for something, but we're not. We're just not asking for special favors. We're just asking for fairness and safety and dignity. And it's all in the place that we love and the love to live and, and call home. And so it's sometimes what we maybe look at as, as a Pride Month is, is more about just creating community and making sure that every person, including LGBTQ plus individuals, are, really are feeling a sense of, of belonging and respect and, and valued. And the more I thought about it, the more I, I know, because I'm almost, as many of you know, I'm almost to my 62nd time around this earth, two days from now, in case you guys wanted to know that my birthday is on its way. But I know that not everyone sees it the same. And I'm, and I'm very clear about that. And I'm, and, and it could be because of religion, it could be because of culture, it just could be because of politics. And, and I respect that, and I hope that I have the same respect coming back. And, and thank you for listening to my rant a little bit tonight. We don't always have to agree on everything. And I think maybe it was Rich's grandpa that said, you know, if we were all the same, we would only need one of us or something.
That's my dad, yeah.
Your dad, okay.
Yeah. If we were all thought the same, we'd only, all but one of us would be obsolete.
Yeah, there we go. But we do have to treat each other with kindness and decency and compassion. And that's what makes community work. And I, and I go even further, and that's what makes Ogden work. And, 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 and having that kindness and decency and compassion. As I looked up some research today, there's some hard truths, you guys. And 11.8% of our youth today identify as not heterosexual. In Utah, 50%, and I'm talking 50% of LGBTQ youth have considered suicide. 14% of them have actually attempted suicide. These aren't just stats. These are our kids. These are our kids. The 1,338 kids that go to Ben Lohman High School, the 1,128 that go to Ogden High. These are our kids. These are our kids that we know. They're in our schools. They go to church with us. They're our neighbors, they're our friends, and our family. And I, I, I just, as council members and as community leaders, I just, I think we have a responsibility to stand for belonging and inclusion. And I say inclusion because this isn't about a political issue. This is about the people that live here in Ogden and the people that we know and love. So sometimes, as we talk about Pride Month, it's a chance for us to say, you belong. And thank you that I belong. And no matter who you love and, and where you want to, or who you want to be with, you're part of our community and I'm thankful for that. So pride is important to us. You might show it through checkered ties, others might show it through tiger sweatshirts and full-on purple suits. But I just want you to know that I show mine with a rainbow. And I, I just, I wanted to try to give you a perspective on pride is, is really prideful. And it's prideful for everyone in different ways. And thank you for letting me be part of this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Hayer and second by Councilmember Chaburka to adjourn. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One of these days, somebody's going to say, yes, I want to do this morning.
It'll never happen.